Paul to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, August 25th, 2020. The first item on the agenda is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Back?
Here.
Knopf?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Barron?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan? Callahan?
Meitzler?
Yes.
Malley? Euer? Euer? Serone?
Here.
And McFadden? McFadden? We have nine out of 14.
Okay. We have Drew, Tony, Mark, Marty, and Mike that are not here. Okay. Next is a reminder to please speak directly in a microphone or a phone, whatever you're calling in on. If you are coming up to address the council tonight, the microphone straight out in front of me is the one that the public will use.
And then also if you are on the phone to mute when you're not speaking.
Thank you. Okay. Item number three is to approve the minutes for August 11th, 2020. Have a motion. So moved. And a second. Okay. Motion by Chantet, second by Knopf. Roll call, please.
Chantet?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan? Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley? Euer? Serone?
Aye.
McFadden? Miller?
Here. Yes, aye.
Rosado? Back?
Aye.
And Knopf?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. Thank you. Next up would be items to be removed, added, or changed. Do we have anything tonight?
No.
Okay. Agenda as is. Next up would be item number five, matters from the public for items not on the agenda.
Hello, my name's Steve Pedersen. I have the property at 750 Main, and I'm trying to get another approach put in. If there's only one, we had three. I'm trying to get it, you know, see if we can get something resolved.
Okay. I guess the question that I would have, Steve, would be, you know, if you have a use for the property, it's sat there empty, that the gas station side of it has been empty since, I don't know, 10 years, and there's nobody using that, there's no reason for us to put that out there if there's no use for that.
Well, two things. My dad just passed away, so he had his thumb on everything, so I couldn't do anything about it. Whether I put a shop there, we sell the property, or I use it for storage, I gotta get trailers in and out of there, and that makes it a lot easier rather than back all the way down the lane.
So if you were to pull a trailer in, you can't turn around anywhere on the property?
It's hard to do. I could bring you up there and show you, a 20, 29-foot trailer. It gets a little tight.
Yeah, because I was gonna say, I don't know how you get a 29-foot trailer through the other one that's to the west side of that.
Right, but then you gotta jack around, try and turn it backwards, and it's difficult, trust me.
Well, I mean, with the way it is there now, I don't know how you would get through those islands and turn around.
If you swing wide, you can make it. I've done it. But I just said, it's really a necessity to have it. It takes value from the property not having it there.
So from staff's perspective, as a policy, we try to minimize the number of curb cuts. And the reason for that is to be as protective as possible to pedestrians and bicyclists. And one of the improvements that we are making on Main Street is adding sidewalk to this part of Main Street, as well as, you know, we're gonna have new bike lanes now that will be in the roadway. And so because the front of that property is not being used for any business purpose, we wanted to minimize the number of curb cuts and simply provide one 40-foot cut at this point. But should there be a business operation that comes to be there, the city at its own expense would be willing to add curb cuts if necessary. And even Mr. Pedersen, if he is marketing his property, could market it with the promise that that could be done depending upon what the future business use is and its need for those curb cuts.
So I have a question, Laura. In regards to the potential of cutting a curb in the future, what would the potential cost be to change the project now in order to accommodate a curb cut now? And what would we maybe be looking at as far as doing a curb cut in the future? Because as I look at this, we have contractors out there right now that would be able to do it. If this was something that we would do in the future, it would be, you know, really having to put a plan together. So I'd just kind of be interested in...
Sure. And I noticed that Rahat is here tonight, and I might defer this question to him if he doesn't mind.
It'd definitely be cheaper to do it now.
I guess my thought is, is we don't know what the property's gonna be used for, and because it has sat vacant for so long in the total reconstruction of the street, we want to have the street look the same from one end to the other. That's why we're doing, moving the curb back to where it should be. There really was never a curb there, other than the parking spaces, which were kind of just built in across the street.
Right, that was on our property, but that curb was, there was a curb there.
Right, but there was parking spaces out there that really never got used much, and nobody ever knew where the road actually went, because people went to the left or the right through there all the time.
Well, two things. It's gonna be very, more costly to do it later than do it now. We've been in construction, it'd be a lot cheaper to do it right now.
Well, I guess I'd need to know what the use of the property's gonna be, and do they require one, two, three, four curb cuts before we're gonna say, yes, we're gonna do that?
Well, now that my dad's passed away, you're gonna see some changes. I may open a shop there again. I don't know. I haven't, you know, like I said, I may do that. So...
So it's about $1,000 for another 40 feet curb cut. If we have to take out that curb and put it back again, as a depress with a driveway, it's about 1,000 feet to replace that curb, $1,000 to replace that curb.
It'll cost you more than that.
It's about $25.
Yeah, it'd be more than that.
That's what, that's what we, our contract prices are typically.
I've got a question.
Joe?
What?
It's a matter of policy that we reduce the number of driveway cuts in properties, but it's not a matter of an ordinance written into any zoning code, correct?
That's correct.
There were three?
And the same thing occurred across the street.
There were three that were there before the construction started, and now we're gonna leave him with one as a matter of policy. And I'm just wondering why that isn't codified, if that's what we're looking to do. And I can see his point. We're taking out three and only putting back one. Why didn't we put it back the way he had it?
So one of the things that we try to do when we do these reconstruction projects in areas where the last time it was done was decades ago, is to implement changes that address, you know, current needs, like the fact that we're putting in sidewalk and the bike lane has created a need for us to try to make that as safe as possible.
At the expense of a potential business that needs two entrances, that could potentially need...
Absolutely. It's like weighing those two interests.
Exactly.
And that's why we brought this to City Council, is because it's a matter of policy to determine, given those competing interests, which do you think is better to be served? The safety interest or the business interest? Where a business does not exist today, and, but there will be bicyclists and pedestrians there.
And personally, I'd rather see it codified. That way, as the city council changes and policies may change, the game rules don't change along the way. Everybody knows what those expectations are up front, rather than changing as community changes year over year.
So if a property is vacant at a time that a road is reconstructed, they get one 40-foot curb cut?
If that's what, yeah, if that's what we're looking to do as a matter of policy, I'd rather see that codified. That way, everybody knows what it is.
It is in, it is in our city code that any commercial property gets one driveway at this time. That's in the city code at this point. But obviously, council can override the code themselves, so that's why it's being discussed here.
We dealt with this when we rebuilt Wilson Street as well. For all the commercial buildings that were along Wilson, a lot of them had basically on-street parking, where they could pull off the street over a drive, or, you know, a drive-over curb and pull right up to the front of their buildings. Well, all that went away when the sidewalks went through, and then they had to have their approach to their, the one curb cut that they got, and then they could park off the side of it. So we've been through this before, and, you know, I know, I know businesses don't like that, but if you have the need for it, and there was a business there, I could see that. But until there's a, you know, demonstrated demand, I don't know that that's what we want to do.
Okay, okay, are you gonna put that, you gonna put that in writing then?
Yeah.
That you'll cover all expenses, 100%, right?
Yes.
Yeah, well...
As far as the curb cut, yeah.
So what if I open a business next month? Then you're gonna do it right away? I mean...
If that's what...
Because that could happen. I mean, I, you know, I don't know, you know, like I said, I've got another repair shop in St. Charles. I may go do it here. I don't know yet. But something's gonna happen there. And, like I said, this is just a deterrent for me. I mean, it's crazy. I had three curb cuts to begin with, and I'm only asking for one more. I don't see why that's...
So if we were gonna give you one, where would you locate it, and why would you want it at that exit?
I'd want them on each end of the property. That's a, that's a huge frontage there. It's not just a little shop. It's a huge frontage.
Well, the other side is just a parking lot right now.
Yeah, well, people aren't supposed to park there. That's another issue that I have, because the guy across the street owns all the rentals, and they all park there. Jim Anderson.
Okay.
And he doesn't have the parking spots to cover his building, which is another ordinance violation, because I went through that in St. Charles when I built my building there.
Okay, well, I...
And I've asked him, I've asked him to pay insurance, you know, cover insurance, I mean, else, he refuses to do it. So...
So, like, and I get to your point, July. I understand that. But I think, you know, city wants to start heading towards more of a pedestrian flavor to the city of Batavia, and we were working towards that. And we've had people in here, when we did streetscapes, and they were designing it, and landscape architects, who've said, you know, curb cuts don't help with pedestrianism. There's a risk involved. It doesn't help with complete streets. It, you know, I can understand the businesses wanting to have it. If you don't know, I mean, what you want to do yet, as you're saying, and I fully understand it, I think the city, I'm more for saying, put the curbs in, but we're trying to be flexible to say, if you do come in with a plan and say, say, I have a business here, we'll work with you on that. I think we gotta keep moving forward with what we see the city to be.
Yeah. We'll provide you with the letter.
My, my building in St. Charles is a smaller square, you know, frontage, and I have two curb cuts there. And, you know, I need them. I gotta have them. I know how it is to operate. I gotta have them. I couldn't have people backing up down there, they hit another car. So, like I said, it's a lot cheaper to do it now.
You know, I think it would be different if the, if the site was being used for something other than storage. So if you have a plan, you know, here coming up in the future to use it for something other than solely storage, I think that's maybe something that...
Wolf, question. Okay, so say this happens, and I want to have it done. How long is it gonna take to get it done? Take months? Or would you do it right away? Would you do it, do it the week I present the permit?
It depends on when you wanna do it. Like, obviously, in December and January, it's tough to get it done.
It's not gonna happen in a week that you ask for it. I can tell you that right now. I know, but I know how this works. So what I'm gonna say is, what's gonna happen is, you're gonna present something to the city, and the city will say, okay, we'll be happy to accommodate you. We'll have to go get pricing to get it done, and they'll look to get it done. So it could take, I don't know, three weeks, a month perhaps. But that, you know...
In the right weather.
And also, if you're gonna get, put a business in there, there's probably gonna have to be some review by the development department before you're gonna get a, that in there.
Well, see, there you go. See, now you're gonna, you'll fight me on that then, too.
No, no, there's a process that you have to go through for everything.
Well, I understand.
And that process takes time, and those two processes could happen at the same time.
Let me explain to you my building in St. Charles. St. Charles had a 50-foot setback rule, but it was for all the dealerships down the street from me. It took me six months to finally get some sense, where people were like, I couldn't do anything with the property then. They wanted all grass, would ruin the property, and that's, that's what I want to avoid.
Well, I'll tell you this right now. I don't want that property to turn into what the one that you have in St. Charles looks like. There's no way we're gonna allow what your shop looks like in St. Charles on Main Street.
Okay.
That'll never happen here.
Okay.
So I think Gary has something to say.
Gary?
I just wanted to also just provide clarification, because it's been stated a couple of times, and I want to make sure everyone's on the same page. Opening a business does not necessarily equate to an additional curb cut. Opening a business that necessitates an additional curb cut will equate to an additional curb cut. So I think, I think there's a distinction there, and that goes to what Alderman Wolf was just saying, in that you'll be going through a process for approvals, and through that approval process is how that distinction will be made.
Anybody else?
Oh, so Scott here?
Go ahead, Scott.
You know, we're, we may have zipping issues, depending on what the ultimate use is for this, plus, you know, he would probably need to get building permits for modification of structure. You know, again, it depends on what he's gonna do there. So, I mean, there, you know, it's not gonna, like you, like was mentioned, it's not gonna be an immediate thing for the changes that may be necessary.
Right.
You know, as far as the curb cut goes, I guess the letter that I would think you would put out, Laura, would be that if, you know, through approval of a development on that property, if the curb cut is warranted, then you would get that, and we would pay for the curb cut.
100%.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
And a speedy, it'd be happening in a month, right?
I can't guarantee that it would happen in a month if you came to me, let's say, like, the last week in November, and we started that process. It would, you know, depend upon the temperature at which the concrete could cure, because we'd want to make sure that it didn't, so that it lasted a really long time. But barring those types of things, I think, like, it would be, I don't want to speak for you guys. What, what time period? Six weeks? Six weeks sounds reasonable to get. If, if we had a six-week lead time, you'd have cured concrete to drive over.
And Laura, would that be for, like, perfect conditions, so there is a possibility that it could be delayed from the six weeks, should anything happen as this goes on through the process, correct?
Of course.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I just don't want to, you know, set them up of, it is going to be six weeks with that expectation. There's so many variables, I believe, that would go into this that may...
Right.
... prolong it.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay. I don't know what else we can tell you other than that, but I think we're proceeding with the plan that was, you know, designed long ago for that street, and, you know, what is guaranteed to you today is one 40-foot curb cut.
And do you have a business card where I can send this letter to, so I make sure that it, or should I just send it to 750 Main Street?
I got, I got a business.
Okay. Perfect. I'll send it to you there then.
Is it in writing?
Yes. Copy, tape two?
Yes.
You got it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next up is item number six, consent agenda. Alderman, Chantet?
Your Honor, just one item, ordinance 20-55 annexing roads across a Nyco right-of-way. This is property in the 7th Ward.
And I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read. Second? Motion by Chantet, second by Knopf. Roll call.
Chantet?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan? Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley? Absent. Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Miller? Aye.
Rosado? Absent. Back?
Aye.
And Knopf?
Aye.
Motion carried. 10 to 0.
Let the record reflect that Alderman Euer chimed in at 7:18. Okay. Next up would be a discussion on small business and non-for-profit grants. Laura?
Yes. So at City Council's last meeting, they decided to allocate $20,000 of the remaining OECD grant for the purpose of providing $1,000 COVID-19 grants covering the same items that were previously covered by the initial two rounds of small business grants for that purpose. And they wanted to broaden the scope of who would be eligible to receive those grants to all small businesses of that size, fewer than 10 employees, as well as not-for-profits. And subsequent to that decision, I was amending the documents and seeking input from Main Street and the Chamber, and they raised a couple of concerns that I think that they would like to address with you tonight and ask if you might consider some alteration to that program. And so I will turn it over to Margaret and Sheri. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. First of all, thank you for allowing us to be part of the Economic Revitalization Committee that's awarded these grants. Through this, we've been able to grant about $23,000 to local businesses to directly cover costs they've had to incur in order to continue to serve the public as a result of COVID regulations. These funds have been important because they were above and beyond their regular budget in order to operate. They had to have these in order to serve the community, to serve their audience, to serve their customers. And this is really where we started thinking on this, this third round that you guys wanted to offer, is how do we make sure that this $20,000 goes out to businesses in that same vein, to make sure that it is used so that they can continue to operate in service to the public? It is Department of Commerce and Community Affairs money originally, and our first thought was, well, business, it's gotta just be business. But we started thinking in terms of what our different nonprofits are, and agree with you that there are some nonprofits in the community that absolutely serve the economic vitality of this community and would, would fall into that category. So the more we discussed it, and the more we looked at it, we thought that perhaps a simple change to the framework, a simple line, that said that in order to apply for these funds and qualify for them, the organization or business needs to be using those COVID-related supplies in a facility, indoor or outdoor, can be a loose term on a facility, to service the public on a regular basis. So this would include art galleries and museums. It would include...
Theaters.
Theaters and churches that are operating, holding services or other programming. It would exclude those groups that are not operating right now, theaters that have ceased their programming, churches that are only operating virtually, and it would exclude home-based businesses or professional services that really don't have customers come in, and keep those funds for COVID-related supplies that really do service the public good, as opposed to the private good.
Yes, I agree.
Anything, Anna?
Well, we, that's what our request is on the $20,000. We know that we really need Water Street Studios to benefit from that, and other not-for-profits. We definitely are 100% behind that. But knowing that when we go into the future months, the fall months, the winter months, the colder months, that there are so many businesses right now that will be hanging on by a thread, and they will need more help. So I know that we have funds left over after the $20,000, and I really would like to say, let's keep an eye on what these businesses will find out that they need in the future that they don't know that they need now. I'd like to allocate those monies for that in the future.
Yeah, as we look at what's happening in Will and in Kankakee, and some other places even in, in the Midwest, I think it is important to hold on to that, at least until we find out where the county money is going as well. But this $20,000, we felt really strongly that if we can allocate that to organizations and businesses that are currently serving the public, then that those COVID resources would be used to the best public good.
We did talk about that at our last meeting, that we would like to hold back on some of that money. That's why we only went with $20,000, because we knew that in the fall, as things get colder, you're not gonna be able to serve outside, you're not gonna be able to have the same access that you have today when it's 90 degrees out, that, you know, we will probably have to do this again. So that's why we only went with $20,000. I don't know what anybody else thinks. I have an issue adding a church in there, because this is tax money, regardless of what anybody says it's a grant. It's tax money that was paid by the businesses that we're giving it back to. When you have a church that doesn't pay taxes, I have a problem giving them tax money.
Well, no, you, we're not adding the churches in. The way it was written, it was including churches, because it was any nonprofit under a certain number of employees. So what we're actually suggesting is...
So we did that.
Yeah, that you reduce that if you want, if your intent, if your intent on council was to include nonprofits like churches, to, to reduce that to only those that are currently operating programs and services for the public.
Alan?
Go ahead.
The only concern that I have is I, do you know that there are some nonprofits that don't have a home base, that don't have a building for somebody to come in and service to? But they are still holding virtual fundraisers, and the, some of these nonprofits do support the community and other programs within the community.
But would they need PPE? If they're only holding virtual, they don't need gloves and sanitizer and, and, and Lysol and, and those kinds of things. And at least the amount that they would need for their employees and their volunteers isn't burdensome to the organization. What's burdensome to the organization is when you're serving the public.
Yeah, I think there is some...
You have to wipe the table down every time, and you have to change everything out every time somebody sits.
I think some, there is some burden, though, for these organizations, is because they're not able to hold their fundraisers like they have been able to previously. And I think, you know, some of these nonprofits are having to pivot their fundraising because of COVID.
Right.
So some of them, kind of like you, like you guys did, if you came up with the squares, you had to come up with the software, you would not have done that unless COVID had happened. So some of these nonprofits are having to come up with some sort of software to be able to handle some of these fundraising activities that they're doing, maybe doing a, you know, virtual bag, some of these other virtual programs that they're doing. I do know that there is one nonprofit, I don't know if it's a nonprofit, but they're doing a bingo game, and they are gonna be servicing people outside, and that would be, you know, they need to make sure that they have the PPE. So, and they don't have, they don't have a building.
Well, that's why I said, like, facility outside or inside. I actually think that something like that, as a committee member, I would consider something like that as qualifying as a need. But what you were suggesting before, like, using the squares and technology and things like that, you guys would have to allow for other items to be included in that PPE list, because as of right now, it's extremely restrictive.
Yeah.
And we talked about that, too, because we think that there is a need by a lot of like that as qualifying as a need. But what you were suggesting before, like, using the squares and technology and things like that, you guys would have to allow for other items to be included in that PPE list, because as of right now, it's extremely restrictive.
Yeah.
And we talked about that, too, because we think that there is a need by a lot of small businesses for things that don't really fit that list. The problem is that we offered that shortlist to everybody. So if we extend that list, now we have to offer the extended list to everybody.
Yeah, I think this round was intended to try to expand the reach for what we originally did into the not-for-profit area. I mean, it's one of the things that I think would be the benefit of this round.
And do know that the grant is for a thousand dollars. So I know a lot of nonprofits have had canceled their galas and fundraisers, but this grant isn't going to-
Replace revenue.
It wouldn't replace their revenue, it wouldn't pull them out of their financial struggle.
Right.
It would be really just a generous donation by the city to help them in this crisis.
And I don't think even the women's club running their bingo night is spending a thousand dollars on PPE for their bingo.
Right.
They'll spend about a hundred.
But that might help them with their overhead.
It absolutely could. But I'm just thinking, trying to, in the spirit of what you were trying to do.
As a small nonprofit, any little bit amount that helps with their overhead is extremely beneficial, because they can use that money. That is more money going back to the community from what they're raising.
Didn't we bring this issue up last week when we talked about places like the Lions Club and scout groups? They're nonprofits that do good to the community, that lost their fundraising capability, that this probably doesn't apply to, because they don't have the covered expenses. And I remember bringing up the question about churches, and I thought we had said that they were along with these other ones, that they weren't part of this.
I don't remember that. I thought it was broadly all not-for-profits, including scout groups and churches and whatever not-for-profit it is, they just had to have the covered expenses of the type.
I thought we had the brick and mortar stipulation in there. Because I recall that discussion-
I don't recall that.
We were talking about brick and mortar locations, not somebody working out of their house, and not some of these other groups that don't have these types of expenses as part of keeping that nonprofit running.
Yeah, so I remember that comment, and the language in the original website did say something about having a pedestrian, I know I looked it up then, I couldn't remember what the language was, but it was something about being customer-facing and having customers come to you, which kind of implies a building. But I think Sherry and Margaret, the language that you were just mentioning, I think is exactly in the spirit of what I was envisioning for this third round, and I think you articulated it really well. And I think, Joe, when you said something about the churches, and the reply back to you was that under ten full-time employees, which in my head, I thought, sure, all the churches around here probably have more than ten full-time employees, so they don't qualify, but maybe they do, I don't know.
Mark.
Yes, so what we wrote into the program was that it had to be customer-facing.
Right.
And so that's why, even though a Boy Scout troop does not have a physical place where people gather necessarily, there's still interaction with the public.
Usually.
Got it, yeah.
Mark, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I want to follow up on actually what Laura just said there, because we, you know, you may have an HVAC company that people don't come into it, they go to people's houses, so that they may need that funding. Also, the grant is up to a thousand dollars, and they have to be reimbursed, so they're going to show a receipt, and if it's like, I bought a hundred dollars with PPE for this event, then that's all they're going to get, is a hundred dollars. I think that's an important thing that we note in there. The only thing that I struggle with is picking who gets funds and who doesn't. I don't, if we say that certain businesses or nonprofits shouldn't get funding, they shouldn't be included in this round, I'm not comfortable with that. I can't determine what is making some of these businesses hard for them, but if they're following the guidelines, saying these are the things they have to get, then it's going to be limited anyway. I don't think you're going to have everybody using a thousand dollars.
It's one of the reasons why in this round, because of that, we did the first come, first served language. So the funding, the grants will be provided until the funding has been dispersed.
I think we should be, at least, we're going to start having to pare back who we're giving the money to. I mean, because come wintertime, things are going to get really tight.
Yeah.
And we should try to hang on, not for ourselves, but hang on to whatever monies we have that we can distribute to the most deserving businesses that can survive. I think we're going to be triaging things, and that's a tough spot to be in, but I can see that happening. And so we really got to be selective where we're giving money out to.
We chose to not be selective when it came to the liquor license granting, and there's nothing stopping Walmart and Jewel and all those from doing it. And that was the point that several of us were making earlier, is that we're giving money away that we didn't have. Now, this is, we were assuming that money we were going to get for the COVID funding from the county, and now we know a little bit more about that. But, again, trying to pick and choose who we give funding to just seems like a bad practice. I don't know how we manage that and determine who that need and what companies and nonprofits should get money.
Anybody else?
Is there, can I ask, is there any conflict in granting the money to nonprofits, given what it was funded from? The Department of Commerce and Community Opportunity, or I forget how it's-
Economic Opportunity.
Economic Opportunity. Does that draw any conflict if we give it to social service agencies and other nonprofits? I don't know, I'm just asking you, as you try to determine who to give it to and what the cutoff is.
The only one that I have a problem with is the non-taxpaying entity. I'll just say it that way. That's the only one that I have an issue with. Everything else I do not have an issue with, because of the services that they provide to the community on whatever level that may be.
To nonprofits?
To nonprofits, correct.
Or do none of the nonprofits pay tax?
So do we need to rewrite this?
Oh, definitely.
Okay. Well, then rewrite it.
Definitely.
Rewrite it, and then let's get this figured out and get it back out there, so that we can get the money out to the people that need it.
So what I have is that it is, has to have a facility that serves the public on a regular basis. They must be operating and accepting the public into their business at this time, and it excludes those who are not open to the public. It would not include home-based businesses and service-based businesses that are not open to the public. So it sounds like that is not HVAC, going to someone else's place of business or home, and they're not opening up their own offices, you know, to the public for service, then I would, it sounds like that is excluded. And then the question is whether churches are included or excluded. It sounds like we're saying churches excluded.
You know, I kind of feel like, you know, if there's a business that's ten employees and they're HVAC and they're going into somebody's house every day, they might go to five different houses a day with, you know, eight employees. That's a lot of, and most of them are using the little fiber boots, you know, to cover their, whatever footwear they have, they're wearing gloves, they're wearing masks, I mean, and they're only using them one use.
I agree with that, but I do want to point out, but we're trying to serve the businesses that have had a financial burden because of COVID.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't think that HVAC, I mean, I'm not speaking for every HVAC-
Yeah.
But their businesses have still been kind of COVID.
With everybody stuck at home, they're having to fix whatever breaks at home, they have to deal with that, I guess that's true.
And if your issue with the churches is that they're not taxpaying, I would say that rather than churches.
That's why I revised my statement, because I'm sure I'm going to get beat up tomorrow.
Well, I mean, because there probably are other, there may be other bodies that incorporates them, and-
My problem there is that they are 501(c)(3), just as any not-for-profit is, so I'm not sure what the non-taxpaying means. I mean, if they own their property, they're not paying property tax, but-
If they fit the rest of the, they fit the rest of it, then let them have it.
I guess, because if, at the core of this, we're trying to assist organizations with keeping their employees and the public safe-
Right.
Then they're doing that.
Well, and there's also the argument that could be made that we talked about today, and I'm just going to use one church as an example, because it's right in the heart of downtown. If United Methodist Church was holding services every Sunday, and they wanted to apply for this grant for their congregation, our downtown would see a bump in people every Sunday at lunch. Every Sunday at lunch, people who were coming to church would go to lunch. So there is an economic impact, the same way there is from people going to a studio show at Water Street. And I was on the same side you were until I started talking at three.
Yeah, I was going to say, that convinces me more that if they are going to bring more people, they're going to spend more money on, so that is economic development.
Right.
Al.
Your Honor.
We've had this conversation before here, maybe thirty, forty years ago, that Lyer and Davis, and this funding any type of money to church, it's real dangerous and real hurt, if you get into the U.S. Constitution and separation of church and state. If you give it to one church, why aren't you giving it to the rest? I mean, it's real, that's a real touchy subject, and it's one that some of these law firms that like to go out and go after people that they think they can catch up, I would be very cautious if we do something like that, given what I think would come back to greet us at the door two weeks later with somebody challenging our ability to give donations to the church, regardless of whatever church it is.
Should I cover that with the city attorney mayor and get him to weigh in on it?
If you want to have a right of opinion about it.
Maybe.
Yeah, maybe before we do, let's ask for an opinion on that, because right or wrong, at least we'll get an answer on it, and then hopefully, if anything happens beyond that, we'll have something to stand on.
Sounds good.
And then rewrite it to-
We'll rewrite it, and then we will bring all of this to Committee of the Whole on September first.
Okay. This would cover daycares as well, right?
If they have fewer than ten employees.
Fewer than ten employees, absolutely.
Which they may not have been included first time around.
They weren't home-based businesses originally, and are you speaking of a-
Well, I'm thinking of both, the facility where you take your kid, or if somebody is a licensed facility, working a daycare out of their home. Yes, it's a home-based business, but they do have economic development on a-
I would consider it a home-based business. I mean, it's in their home. What's the difference?
We could sit here and brainstorm for hours and pick through every little thing, and it's, and we won't get anywhere. See, that's what I thought this economic development, dispersment crew was supposed to do, was to do that, so we, as fourteen people, didn't have to try to make those decisions.
Right.
Because then it gets really muddled, if we do that.
Mm-hmm.
I think we have to pick what our guidelines are and let them do it.
Right.
That's fair.
I'm much, again, I'm much more okay with somebody else making the decision, this business gets it, this business gets it, and that one doesn't. I don't want to be part of that. I want to say, here's the money, give it away.
I feel like you've provided us with enough guidance that we can do that.
Okay. Everybody else okay with that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both for coming.
Stick around, you're going to want to be for the next one. All right, we'll move on to item number eight, a discussion on North River Street lighting. I really don't want to start this.
Hey, Alan, this is Drew. I'm not starting it, I'm just letting you know I joined about halfway through that last discussion.
Let the record reflect, Alderman McFadden has joined, yeah, we'll say seven thirty-eight.
Sounds about right.
Okay. So I'm sure everybody read the email we got about this, and I guess we're just going to open it up for discussion on where we want to go. Do we want to go through whatever procedures we have to to get this done? Is there ways we can expedite this? What do we do next?
Do you want me just to lay out some of what the issues are that are presented in Gary's memo?
That would be wonderful.
Okay, so, in order to install this type of overhead lighting on North River Street is more complicated than it was to install the lighting on South Water Street. On South Water Street, you had both very strong utility poles and very well-established trees, to which this lighting could be affixed. You have neither of those present on North Rivers, on North River Street. The lighting fixtures that do exist along that roadway are, they are unable to carry the load that would be presented by these types of lights being attached to them, and so the best possible thing that we can attach those to are the buildings on either side of the street. And all of that, of course, is private property. We would need to devise, to devise a way of anchoring the lighting to the building, and this is for sure going to result in drilling into those brick and limestone buildings. So if we decide that we want to move forward with this, there should be an initial coordination with the private building owners in order to determine whether they would even allow us to do this, and then to do a structural analysis of their buildings to determine whether they could hold those anchors. We would need to retain a design consultant, assuming that the city and the private building owners do agree to work together. And the general scope of that design work would include building evaluations, structural design, lighting design, plan preparation, and construction contract documents. And then we would do the final coordination with the private building owners, parallel with that design process, and secure the building owner's final approval and any necessary legal agreements that we would need to execute with them. And then the bidding and the construction. So it is a project that I wish it were as easy as contacting a landscape lighting company and saying, here's what we want it to look like, and how much does that cost? But unfortunately, due to the nature of that street, there's a lot more involved to it. And so we're just seeking formal direction from council on whether you would like us to proceed with expending the time and resources in order to pursue this. And I would add that in the meantime, that the Streets Department has added considerable lighting to the trees that line either side of North River Street. And so there has been some improvement, but, you know, you may decide that more lighting is necessary.
Mike?
So I guess I don't agree with staff, okay? I think I said it last week, I think we should put poles in the ground. I, you know, first, I think we should have some design company come in and design it, but I think putting, you know, attaching something to the buildings, it can be, you know, a legal nightmare, in a strong wind, things start blowing out, whatever's going to happen. I think we put poles in the ground that, you know, we have it structurally engineered, that they go in the ground, they take the pressure of the wire, and it's all been designed that way, and we have nothing to do with the building owners. And we just, you have to have somebody design it, that however, they're going to place them to get the maximum benefit of the lighting. That's my thought.
Dan?
So I walked away from that meeting with a sense of, the tenants of the businesses were very gung-ho, and the City Council seemed to be on the same page, but when it comes down to it, it's not the tenant's decision whether or not we can drill into their building owner's building. So I get it, and I sighed when I read this memo, because it's unfortunate, it's not the city being anti-business, it's the city covering the fact that there could be a horror story of one of these things falling on somebody and taking out a family if we don't do this thing proper. I guess I would disagree with the poles. We spent all this money making the place look as nice as it does, it feels to me that it would be distracting to have poles up there. If there was a way to very quickly get some key building owners on board and see if there was some way to fast-track that, that would be my pumping here, I guess, to still get this thing done and possibly have it done by October. Is that completely out of line, Gary? Or, I mean-
I mean, we only have approximately half dozen building owners to deal with, so that's not a big hurdle, number-wise.
Yeah.
You know, those same building owners, we've had many discussions in the past on other projects, so I don't anticipate, you know, we're going to walk in their office and walk out with a signature. That would be surprising to me if that happened. And just by the time you go through the design process, it's going to take a considerable amount of time. That's several months in and of itself to draft up the plans, do the bidding process, come for contract award, and that's not going to happen by October.
And I just want to make sure I heard you correctly on the first part. You don't-
don't think that all of the building owners are necessarily on board?
No, no, I'm not saying that. What I am saying is, I don't think we're gonna walk into their office and fifteen minutes later walk out with a signature of approval. I think the building owners are gonna need some assurances from the city in the form of, you know, what are we willing to indemnify against?
Right.
What, what will the construction look like? What, what are the potential for, you know, damages? There are the whole host of things that if I'm a building owner, I'm gonna want the answers to before I go signing out of that line.
And we'll want to review the same with our insurance.
Right.
To see how that might affect our premiums if we offer that type of indemnification on all of those other buildings.
So, the rea, the reality is, the adults in the room is saying, we probably, we can't get this done right.
You're not going to get it done for the season.
It's probably not for this season.
Yeah, it's a neat, it's a neat idea.
It is.
And, and implementation is the problem. And, you know, I, I started thinking about it after the memo came out, and my first thought was, okay, this is all well and great, we could have it for next year, but what does it cost? I mean, are we talking twenty thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars, or a hundred thousand dollars? It's not gonna be cheap.
For sure. And I come back to the fact that they were emphatic in saying, we need your help yesterday.
Right.
And here we're saying, we might not be able to do this until the snow thaws.
Right. So everything that we can do, like we've already done out in the trees, I think is where we're limited to this year, as far as lighting, or, you know, unless we want to get a spotlight out there and have somebody take turns spinning it around and draw people in. I don't know how else we light that up and do it realistically this year.
And you know, since that meeting, we now have beautiful blue tables with beautiful blue umbrellas in them, and we have all of those trees lit up on the street. I think significant improvements have been made since that meeting, and maybe now that we have an analysis that, um, this is a very expensive thing to accomplish, maybe people could offer other suggestions for improvement that might have a similar impact, but don't have a similar cost.
Well, we did in the staff memo. That, that is festoon lighting on the buildings themselves.
Right.
Similar to, to the restaurants right here.
Right.
That, that's something that'd be very inexpensive, and just something the building owners could do.
And they can implement that essentially right now.
They could do that tomorrow.
Yeah, and I look at it too, and this is something I'll give businesses, Main Street, whoever set all this stuff up, credit for. There's programming down there now.
Mm-hmm.
There's music there, there's stuff going on, and that draws people just as much as lights do.
Right.
You know, I think the combination of those two things has really made things happen down there. I, I've had several people from outside of Batavia comment to me that driving through town at different times over the last two weeks, that they are just shocked at how many people were downtown, especially on foot.
Right.
Come on up.
Yeah, I agree with everything you're saying. Obviously, I'm not an engineer, so I can't answer sort of the question that Mike had about put, putting posts up. I will say that another problem that you're gonna have trying to run them from building to building is that we have a very large stretch on the west side of that street that doesn't have a building up by the street. And if you're looking to light the street, the public part of the street, you would have a huge black hole from Bar Revolution all the way up to River's Edge, because there's nothing on the other side of the street there to hold it, unless you did posts like, like Councilman O'Brien suggested. What I will say is, you are right. There has been a definite increase in traffic with all of the improvements that we've put in. And yes, entertainment is a bigger draw than light in August. But as the sun goes down sooner, and it's dark at five or six o'clock, or seven o'clock, will it still be a draw when it's dark? And that would be my only argument to investigating whether or not we can do something like the posts, where we can put them wherever we need them to be, as opposed to being dependent on the businesses. And again, I don't know the engineering. I've got them in my backyard, just on eight-foot posts stuck in concrete buckets. So, that's how I did it in my yard. Obviously, there's bigger insurance concerns on River Street. I don't know the engineering, but that would be what, I mean, if we're gonna look at it at least a little bit more, that would be my suggestion, is to do something, look at something at least a little more along the angle of what Councilman O'Brien suggested, where we have control of where those lights are, and keep in mind that the sun is not gonna be setting at eight o'clock at night-
Right.
-for the next few months.
Alan? Gary, I, I have one question real quick. The posts that we have out there now, the, the lights are on today, is there any way to utilize those for any different kind of lighting to brighten up the street? Because I think that's one of the, one of the, the problems that has surfaced over the times that I've been down there, or the other comments that I've heard from the public, is that there definitely is that black hole in the middle of the street, especially as the, the trees and everything have matured over there. You don't get as much light on the street.
I have to chuckle, because I was never a fan of the flying saucer lights from day number one. So, you're, you're speaking to the choir on that one. Are there, certainly there, but, but you would need to find light fixtures that would then have, have the arm to, to adapt to those poles. You could certainly do that if you, if you desired to increase the lighting levels out there. Um, that's a, that's a separate exercise that could certainly be, be looked into.
Because I'm just trying to figure out how we can use something that we already have out there, the posts that are already there with lights on them, and just change the look of the street by changing the fixture that's on the poles that are there.
I was gonna say, you're gonna change the look of the street, and you're gonna change the, the, the feel of the street, which council spent pains, taking hours-
Yeah, I, I know that, but this is a different time than when we built the street, and we're utilizing the street, I think, differently even than we envisioned it when we decided to do the street that way.
Yeah, that's, that's up to you guys. If you want us to investigate-
I mean, that would be no liability. There would be no liability because they'd be our own light poles already, so we wouldn't have to have any agreements with anybody.
Yeah, and we-
We could keep them out of-
What O'Brien is suggesting, we wouldn't need agreements either. It's just the cost and-
We wouldn't cross the road.
Right, and they wouldn't cross the road, which is the other issue we have. We have to keep that open, what, thirteen feet?
Fourteen feet.
Fourteen feet. We have to keep open. So if they're not out in the roadway, that would take that out of the equation.
We're just talking, it's just so you and I are both talking the same thing. We're just talking about the flying saucer lights going away, and new lights which are brighter.
Something different.
What's a flying saucer light?
The little lights that are out there.
They look like a flying saucer.
The streetlights that are there today.
Yeah.
And we're getting rid of those lights?
Well, no.
I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
That's a possibility. I mean, we, we're using our own poles to try to achieve what we want on the street is more light, more, you know, more pizzazz on the street if we change the lights to something different.
I assume we're gonna want the same, you know, dark bronze color, so I mean, there's gonna be certain constraints and-
No disco balls.
What's that?
No disco balls out there.
Oh, from space, spaceship disco balls, yeah. We could certainly look into what might work.
You know, that may be a cheaper and easier to implement solution to this than trying to string lights back and forth across the street.
Well, you, you know, to follow you, what you're saying, Alan, this, go ahead.
That's good.
What, what you're saying, Alan, is, is going just north and south, don't cross the road.
Right.
So we wouldn't have to really deal with the heads, right, Gary?
No, that's, that's, I think what he's saying, is we're just gonna deal with the heads only, the, the lighting heads.
See, I wouldn't even-
Not stringing lights, because those lights poles are way too short to begin with.
See, I don't understand.
You can't string lights on those poles north-south, because you still gotta cross them with vehicles. You gotta go in and out of parking garage.
Right, but we're saying not, not, I'm not saying, like, excuse me, I'm saying north and south. Just run them down the, not across the road.
No, he's not talking about stringing lights.
I'm not talking about stringing lights between them. I'm talking changing the fixtures that are out there.
And that's it?
Right. Just change the fixtures to something else that light livens the street up and brightens it up.
And we may be able to-
Yeah, I think-
We may be able to use the existing fixtures with brighter, brighter LED bulbs.
Right.
That's, I don't even, I don't remember the catalog cuts on those.
Yeah, I, I think, I think the reason, you know, we have those lights, and, and they, they're downlight, so it's-
Right.
You know, so we want to kind of maintain that also, because at the end of the festivities of the night, when the city of Batavia goes to sleep, we still get to keep the lights, those lights on, but we shut off the festive lights. And so, we, you know, we, we want the lumens to be kind of quieter, right?
Well, that's, that, you guys are talking two different things, so.
Dan?
Is, is there a compromise here to offer an incentive to the business to enhance their own lighting at their own place of business? Maybe like a micro grant of some kind in the long run, maybe that would actually be less expensive. I'm, I'm serious, maybe it would be less expensive.
You want to buy lights hanging on your building?
If you want to do something special to your building, we'll give you a thousand doll, up to a thousand dollars to, to spend towards lighting. Even if ten businesses uh, came forward, that might actually be less expensive, and they would be in control of getting the lighting up as quickly as possible, because they, they see the benefit of drawing people to their disco ball.
Or we provide them the light.
That's essentially what was in my original memo from two weeks ago.
Right. He says-
Because they can choose the style.
That makes more sense to me. I wasn't at that meeting, that makes more sense to me.
We could even, the city could purchase those, uh, they're called twinkle lights, um, and we could make sure they're all of the uniform type, such as are being installed in the trees, and give those to the businesses for them to install in their windows, and then that would then project out into the street.
And those could be deployed in a week or two?
Yes, as soon as Amazon can get them to us.
Amazon can deliver them, yeah.
Festoon lighting, there's more light.
Right.
So if you did the festoon lighting, if you offered them the festoon lighting, then you could purchase that. Plus, the cords are thicker. I know my cord's on my, um-
Here's the mic.
On my Christmas-
Come, come on up and use the mic, that needs to, we need to just have it.
The festoon lighting would have a thicker, more heavy-duty cord, so they would last longer. I know they're a little bit more expensive, but they also give off a lot more light, and if you're looking to have more light on the street and getting it from the business, the festoon would be better than like the fairy lights or the Christmas lights, plus the animals chew through the Christmas lights.
I, I think we were considering having them installed on the inside of the window, and so I wonder if the festoon lights would be too bright for it being inside.
For the inside, maybe. I thought you were thinking from like the, on the outside of the building.
I thought outside the building, outside the building.
Scott Buning may have some things to say about that, too.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if you recall, you know, we had some issues with these, you know, inferior lights, and the way we determine signs is we take a box around the light so that, um, it, it really, it is a sign. So, if we were going to do something like, staff preference to do it on the outside of, of the building, some fact, because it wouldn't be considered like a sign.
Probably like the festoon light, yeah, yes.
Right.
Hang in the festoon lighting on the doorway.
Because that's the way people do, and Alianos did that at one point.
Okay. Abby, did you want to say something?
Yes, um, one question I have is, is it possible to do some, some investigations and some conversations with the business owners or property owners, um, while we look at the other options, like a micro grant to get festoon lighting? Um, because looking long-term and looking at the needs of this street and kind of how this street is likely to evolve in the next couple of years, I don't think string lighting's going to be a bad investment. So if we, if we get the temperature of what the, the property owners are into, um, that might serve us well, even if we have to wait until we've got money in the budget in 2021 to get it done, or we've got time to facilitate or partner with the Chamber and Main Street to have some sort of fundraiser to, to help fund the installation of these, of these, um, of these lights. And, and to, uh, Mike O'Brien's point, too, I think it's likely to be a combination of building and pole attachments, and to Sherri's point, the black hole by the parking garage. And if we do festoon lighting, can we add it to the parking garage ourselves, so that, that area is lit up as well, because it does get dark down there?
I think, and those are all, those are the same questions I was contemplating, and, and until we know the future of One Washington Place, I don't know how much further north we would go beyond River's Edge. Because then on the east side comes the parking garage, and the west side becomes the, the parking lot and a retaining hall. Once we know what's happening with One Washington Place, then we probably, so we want to design the system so that it can be expanded to the north. But the first phase probably wouldn't go much past what's the O'Briens building, because there's nothing else to connect to.
Alan?
Dan?
My concern, I, I would like to see if there's something that we can do lo, long-term, but I take a look at what's on Water Street and the height of them, and, and the light that you get from them. I worry if we're gonna keep that road open, the effects of, you know, are, are we gonna have to put the lights up too high to where they're not even gonna be effective? So I think that's something that we need to take in consideration as we look long-term, is how high we have to put these lights, and to accommodate the trucks that come down, and is it going to benefit? Are we gonna get the benefit out of the streets?
Yeah, I think that, that's why you need a professional designer, to be able to, to specify the right type of light to be hanging fourteen feet in the air and still provide a benefit.
You know, I, I did this in Oak Park again. You know, we, we did this, and they had festoon lights going across the street, and they were up about sixteen feet. And, and it was still a magnet for people to, oh, look at the lights down there and walk down and see it. So, I mean, the, the festoon lights are bright enough that they will, they'll be seen and, and people will notice them. But, but Gary, I agree with you. It should be designed, not by us, by professionals.
Anybody else on the phone have anything?
Could, I'll just go, I don't think Abby got an answer to her question. I, I think staff should proceed forward parallel in contacting the building owners, and all the building owners are also proceeding forward in parallel with their own festoon lights.
Yeah, I think that's-
I think that'd be great. And I volunteer to help walk around and talk to them, too, if, if, you know, we needed just man-hour support.
Sign me up, it's fourth ward.
Yeah. I, I'll say one last time, I won't press it any further, is that I honestly think stay off the buildings, and we can get a four-inch, you know, powder-coated pole matching what we have for the lights, and keep it six inches from the building, and they, they won't be at all noticeable, I don't think. And, uh-
Yeah, I think that's a viable system. It's just dollars and cents.
What's that?
I said, I think that is a viable system. It's just dollars and cents.
It's just dollars and cents, but-
You're doing a foundation for every pole and buying the pole and-
Exactly. But I, I think that's a better long-term-
Yeah.
...solution than tying it to a building, because some of the buildings, I mean, they, they do tend to deteriorate, the buildings.
You're gonna end up with a pole system probably north of the O'Brien's building.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think you're gonna have an option.
I'll chime in, this is Nick.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I would agree with Mike, uh, that I think the poles are worth looking into, but one thing, just to give Gary a little more, uh, chance of a heart attack, it might be early, but we should start looking at, as the fall comes, to do, um, propane gas tanks or something, to, to bring light or warmth to extend the season, is that, look into the feasibility of that.
Could you repeat that, Nick? We're having feedback in here.
He was, he was saying that as the weather gets cooler, that the city should consider putting the propane tank heaters out on the road.
Good point.
A second, Beth.
My only thought was, we really need to tent to keep the heat in. But that's my thought.
That might be a violation of the regulations in terms of the tents are not supposed to be enclosed.
Right, it would have to be a tent without sides on it.
Right.
Or at least twenty-five percent open, or whatever the rule is.
And then you have to still install the tent so that there's still the fourteen, fifteen-foot open space for the trucks.
Hey, Alan, this is Mark.
Go ahead, Mark.
Um, the, the only concern I have with the propane tanks and the heating, not beyond just like tenting and keeping that in, do we offer heaters to every restaurant in town that can't have people sitting inside?
Uh, the other thing would be, since we don't have employees during the time that the public dining is happening in the evening, who turns them on, who turns them off, who replaces the tanks?
Yeah, unfortunately, in my mind, that's up to the businesses, you know, to, to provide that, if they're gonna do that. I mean, everywhere else I've ever been that has that, I'm sure that the business pays for their own heater, their own tank.
And that may be something that we're offering in the springtime, or in the fall.
To be, offer what?
A grant where they use, or just those things.
Yeah, I think that falls right in line with what we were discussing before, that as the fall comes, we may find that there's items that, uh, these types of businesses need assistance with, and just as they needed the tables and chairs to accommodate outdoor dining in Phase Three, they may need heaters as we move into the fall. And we've got about sixty thousand dollars in funding left in that OECD fund, even after we give the twenty thousand dollars in small- $60,000 in funding left in that OECD fund, even after we give the $20,000 in small business and not-for-profit grants.
Okay, anybody else? Are we done with this one?
Uh-huh.
You got direction, where to go? And yeah, and I think we can do these things simultaneously, talking to the business owners, find out if, you know, the reality of what it's going to cost to get some kind of lighting plan and I guess a guesstimate as to what poles would cost if we want to go that route.
Okay, we will move on to Ordinance 20-53, establishing a date, time, and place for a public hearing for convening a joint review board pertaining to the Near East Downtown Tax Increment Financing District.
Your Honor, I'm actually going to take Items Nine and Ten together. These are prescribed by Illinois State Statute regarding the advancement of the TIF District, the Near East Downtown Tax Increment Financing District Redevelopment Plan. So 53 is regarding convening the Joint Review Board. We'll be inviting in a representative from each of the affected taxing districts. That would be 10:30 a.m. on Thursday, October 1. The board would meet at City Council Chambers here at City Hall. The Joint Review Board would be charged with reviewing the public record, planning documents and whatnot regarding the proposal. We then would establish a date and a time for the public hearing. We're proposing 7:30 p.m. Monday, November 2, and that would also be held at Council Chambers. Ordinance 54 then is regarding establishing an Interested Parties Registry, what that does, and that's required by State Statute as well. Persons or organizations can complete a form to be placed on this registry, and they should be entitled to receive notifications regarding changes or certain events related to the progress of the TIF, things like changes to the redevelopment plans, substantive changes to the plans, approved amendments or whatnot that affect residents inside the district. Did I leave, did I leave anything out, or is that?
No, other than the registry is for an initial three-year period, and people can renew that for additional three-year periods thereafter.
And this is all, again, all dictated by the Illinois State Statute?
That's right.
So, okay. So does anyone have any questions or any discussion items? Just following the rules. Okay. So then I guess I would-
Oh, Dan, I have a question.
Sure.
In section five of the document, it talks about the members of the Joint Review Board, and I just had a question. It said High School District and Elementary School District. Does that mean there's two people from the schools represented, or is that just-
So State Statute permits in jurisdictions where there are separate ones. Here, we only have the one, but like what, out near Glendale Heights, they've got one for individual elementary schools and Queen Bee's out there?
Exactly.
Yeah, we've only got the one.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then I would move that we approve Ordinance 20-53, an ordinance establishing the date, time, and place for a public hearing and convening of a joint review board pertaining to the proposed Near East Downtown Tax Increment Financing District.
Second.
A motion of second. Any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Chanson?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan? Absent. Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley? Absent. Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risotto? Absent. Beck?
Aye.
Ann Knopf?
No.
Motion carried, 10 to 1.
Then Ordinance 20-54, authorizing the establishment of a Tax Increment Financing District Interested Parties Registry and adopting registration rules and form for such registries. I would make a motion that we send that to council.
Second.
A motion of second. Any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Chanson?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan? Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley? Absent. Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risotto? Absent. Beck?
Aye.
Ann Knopf?
No.
Motion carried, 10 to 1.
And because we don't have unanimous for those procedural items, we will discuss those. Be on the regular agenda. Yep.
Okay, up next is Item Number 11, Resolution 20-104-R, Intergovernmental Agreement with Batavia Library into IPBC. Alderman, Chanson?
Sure, I got a memo from Wendy regarding this. The city joined that risk pool four years ago to help us manage our health care insurance costs. It's the Intergovernmental Personnel Benefit Cooperative. In March, the library approached the city saying that they'd like us essentially to sponsor them, to join, they have 24 eligible employees that could join the pool. The city has 194 participants, and adding the library, while it does have the potential to affect the city's premiums, it could affect it positively or negatively. So the staff is asking for permission to move forward with an agreement to see if we can have the library join the pool. Wendy, did I leave anything out?
Would be, one of the things that we spend a lot of time talking about is, even though they are in our pool, they are separating everything financially, so-
They'll get their own bill.
Yeah, exactly, which was a huge concern for us. So typically, it's all listed as one, but it's going to be completely separated. So all of the financials and all of their information and their terminal reserves, everything will be separate.
Wendy, if I understand this right, this is a way that the library is reducing their costs?
Correct, yeah. So Blue Cross Blue Shield, just in a grand scheme, has made the determination individually that if you are under 150 lives, they are not interested in being self-funding you. You'd have to be a fully funded plan. So currently, right now, the library does not have access to Blue Cross Blue Shield because of that. Additionally, IPBC, the bylaws are that, which understandably with their, their structure, is that to be an actual member, you have to have so many lives. If you're a smaller entity, you then are listed underneath someone. So, so that's why they would, it just made logical sense since we were members to both Batavia's to be tied together.
Well, what I like about it is both the city and the library are funded by the taxpayers, and we're working together to find a way to reduce the cost to taxpayers.
Absolutely.
I'm all for this. I think it's great.
Wendy, how long is it? Is it a three-year agreement, or is it a one-year agreement?
So actually, time goes by fast. I would guess maybe close to seven, eight years ago, state of Illinois passed some legislation where in the past, yes, you had to sign an agreement and you had to stick within it. The legislation was passed that said you didn't, the risk pools for government entities, they couldn't hold you to any sort of timeframe. So the only thing in our intergovernmental agreement is that we do ask that there's a 90-day notice should either party decide to terminate the relationship, and then we would just notify IPBC.
And have you guys like discussed the possibility, like, let's say the library comes in and they have very, you know, as we say, ill people that use more premium than what's paid into it, that then causes our prices to go up. Have there been anything defined to, because you also want to be a good partner and just go, okay, you guys are like way too much, you know, kick you out. Has there been any discussion for either side with that risk of, okay, we will mutually dissolve this when we find it's not beneficial for either party for that?
I think that that would be agreed upon through the intergovernmental agreement. So those things would be listed out.
Yeah.
While it's not going to be specific of, oh, if you have this much, if there's so many years, but it lists clearly that should either party find it not beneficial, they have the ability to give appropriate notice and go from there. So if, for example, the library, even on their own, which even at this point, they haven't 100% decided they want to join, but this is where they're going, but if they decide two years from now, you know what, we want to do our own thing again, they absolutely could notify us, and that would not affect us. What would affect is if for some reason we decided to leave IPBC, that is a risk they're taking because then they would have to be absorbed into another entity. I know IPBC, just with working with them for so many years, they would work with them. They wouldn't just leave them high and dry. But at the same time, that would be a discussion that they would have to do.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a good idea, especially when you're adding more people to the pool.
Right.
You get more premium put in there to help pay the claims.
Mm-hmm.
And hopefully, we end up on the good side at the end of the year.
Mm-hmm.
You just never know.
Absolutely. And you know, everything, the reality is, is their claims are cyclical. It just goes in a circle. Back in 2016, when I came to you guys, we had had about three years of really rough, it was a really rough three years. And then these last three or four years have been amazing. We actually are performing significantly better than the IPBC as a whole. So we're helping the whole pool as a whole. There may come a day that we're going to need their help in return. So just that's kind of the, which is the great financial tool of the IPBC.
And is it possible to bring in the other government entities, like the Park District and some of the other smaller, for them to join in?
Absolutely, yes. Yes, I, once we work our way through this process, it's my intent to talk to the others to see if that might be of interest because having more lives in that pool spreads the risk. That's the whole foundation, IPBC.
I'd love to get the school district in on that.
I also think that George Sheets might be on the phone, and I would like to offer him the opportunity to say any words that he might want to.
Are you there, George?
Yes, I, yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Um, if I'm being asked to make a statement, I guess I would say that we appreciate the consideration very much. We are a longtime participant in Blue Cross Blue Shield of Illinois, but we are our own standalone entity because of our size. And I think the, our perception at this point is that the, is a long-term, or a medium to long-term, great benefit for, we think both, both entities, our rates wouldn't change drastically initially because we are separating the two pools, as was already mentioned. But the benefits of IPBC that brings, would bring to the library would allow us an opportunity that we certainly don't have now. And to my understanding, would have no direct impact on the city overall. I would defer to Wendy for whether that's, whether I'm stating that correctly or not, but we think it's an exciting opportunity to collaborate with another governmental entity, and we appreciate the consideration.
Thank you. If there's any, if there's no other additional discussion, then I would move that we approve Resolution 20-104-R, an intergovernmental agreement with Batavia Public Library regarding IPBC.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Chanson?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan? Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley? Absent. Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risotto? Absent. Beck?
Aye.
Ann Knopf?
No.
Motion carried.
That could go consent, but that's something nice to talk about for taxpayers. I certainly don't mind talking about that.
Exactly what Joe brought up.
Thank you.
Okay, moves this down to Item Number 12, Resolution 20-101-R, approving task order number 11 with Siemens Industries to process E Street Substation Transformer Number One oil for oil dehydration and de-gasification for an amount not to exceed $26,388. Alderman O'Brien?
So we've had some routine scheduled testing in 2019 at the McKee Substation, you know, testing transformers, circuit breakers, and various equipment. They found that there was some moisture getting inside of transformer number one and some gas elements in it. So this is basically just cleaning it up. It's a, it's a different kind of work. It's what we can't do. So we're hiring Siemens to do this work, and basically, it's so we can preserve transformer one. That's pretty much it. Anything else, Rahad?
No.
Pretty much standard stuff. So any questions or comments from anyone? Anyone care to make a motion?
Still move.
Second.
Motion by Knopf, second by Miller. Roll call, please.
Knopf?
Aye.
Chanson?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan? Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley? Absent. Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risotto? Absent. And Beck?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I do want to make notice that this here is budgeted. This was in last year's budget, this year's budget.
Okay, next up is Item Number 13, Resolution 20-102-R, approving task order number 12 with Siemens Industries to provide equipment inspection and testing at Main Substation for an amount not to exceed $27,959. Alderman, O'Brien?
Again, this is just routine scheduled testing at the Main Substation. There'll be transformers that'll go testing to ensure proper internal connections. We'll also go through a complete load, tap, change overhaul. It's just a maintenance issue. I don't think there's much more to add to that. It's just what we need to invest in our electric utility to keep things maintaining. Rahad, anything else else I missed?
No, it's, it's like taking your car for oil change and the 32-point inspection. So then you find what is wrong, and then you fix that. So we do that for each substation every five years.
Any comments or questions from anyone? Anyone care to make a motion?
Still move.
Second.
Motion by Knopf, second by Miller. Roll call, please.
Knopf?
Aye.
Chanson?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan? Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley? Absent. Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risotto? Absent. And Beck?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Next up will be Item 14, Resolution 20-103-R, approving task order number 13 with Siemens Industries to perform tap changer maintenance for three transformers at Northeast and Southeast substations for an amount not to exceed $34,049.
Again, this is just a maintenance issue. These tap changes, I guess, are something similar to in your home HVAC equipment. You know, you might have two stages of filters. The inside stage is the expensive stage. You want to protect that. So you have a filter on the outside stage. It's less expensive. If that gets dirty, you replace it. It's, this is what we're doing. We're just protecting our transformers. These are also the 138 KV substation transformers. So that's pretty much just the standard item that we do to maintain. Anything else with that, Rahad?
No, and, and we are doing those three transformer, two at Northeast and one at South Sub. So there'll be three transformers maintenance done with this one.
Any questions or concerns with anyone?
Yeah, so, yeah, I will get that corrected, so there are some additional price for changing those filters, they broke it down in two items, so I added them up, I realized that after I wrote the resolution, so I may have missed one place to change that number, so I'll match them up. It's actually going to be 34,300, sorry, let me see, $34,049, that's the right...
That's the right number.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Anyone care to make a motion?
So moved.
Move by Knop? Second. Second by Miller, roll call, please.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanson?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan? Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley? Absent, sorry. Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risotto? Absent. And Beck?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, next up is project status. Laura?
Okay, we completed the additional brush pickup that was incidental to the storm that we experienced two weeks ago, and that additional brush pickup cost approximately From the finance department, the bond closing for the 2020 Geo Water Bonds was on August 20th, and the proceeds have been received and the closing costs distributed. Peggy also issued the budget calendar to all departments, and with the deadline for initial budget entry for September 10th, following which, we will have individual meetings with departments to go through and begin discussions on items on their budgets. And then the utility billing continues to work with customers on payment plans. We did resume shut-offs, but any customer that contacts us, we are very willing to set up and accept payment plans. It's a labor-intensive process that requires reaching agreement with the customer on the amounts, and setting up the contract payments, and following through to ensure that customers are making the required payments, but of course, during this time, we want to do everything that we can to try to work with them in order to help them be able to meet their obligations, because the longer they go without making any payments at all, it just continues to accumulate into such a large amount that it makes it harder later to catch up. Also, wanting, wanted to fill you in on some other public works issues, the staff has secured an easement from the Covenant Church on West Main Street for a new sidewalk that's along the Millview Drive frontage, and that will facilitate the pedestrian access to the high school for those students who are parking on Millview. The sidewalk will be installed this fall if possible, or if not, then it'll be included in the 2021 street program. Staff continues to inquire with IDOT as to the status of the investigation related to the pedestrian signals at Wilson Street and South River Street. We've been informed that their review is still pending on that matter. And then development of a scope of services for Carriage Crest Phase 1 Part B engineering study has been finalized, and will be presenting that to Cow in the coming weeks. In community and economic development, we are continuing to work with a number of prospective businesses. We have initial meetings where we discuss what their needs are, or perhaps they have already identified a site that they have in mind. We follow up that meeting by, once a site has been selected, we meet on-site with them to, and we include our building inspection, our planning, our fire marshal, economic development, and I usually attend those meetings as well as the mayor, to do a walkthrough with the property owner, the prospective business owner, so we can take a look, and from the very start, provide them with some feedback on, you know, what, what changes might not, what changes might need to be made, understanding what their plans are, and introduce them to the process, so that we are all working toward making it as efficient a process as possible for our prospective new businesses, and they seem to really appreciate a meeting like that, so that whatever permits they're applying for can be a smoother process instead of, you know, reiteration. The last thing that I'd like to bring up under project status is just an idea of some type of program that might engage with our community, engage with Water Street Studios. As you know, on the north side of this building, there are cutouts where windows probably once existed, but have been filled in solid. In Batavia's past, those spaces have been used for displays of artwork, and I was wondering if perhaps the city council would like to consider a collaboration with Water Street Studios to come up with some plan for putting artwork displayed on this building. Suggestions have been on the west side of the building, perhaps if we could commission artists to portray what it might have been like when this building was being used as a windmill factory, and what the activities of the workers inside, and then on the east side of the building, that which is on the river side of the building, utilize those spaces to pay homage to the beautiful natural scenery of the, the river and the types of wildlife that are represented there. And so if you think that's something that I should move forward with, I'll contact Tyler Egan at Water Street Studios and try to get more concrete ideas about that. I see a lot of nodding.
I like the idea.
Okay.
The idea of using it as a blank canvas.
Yeah.
Instead of the boring window that it is.
Great.
Abby, did you want to say something?
Oh, no, that was it, but I love it.
Great. Okay, and that's all I have.
Okay, does anybody have any questions, or any others, at that point in the night?
Do we have any update on the Colony bikes? Is that put off for the year? What is the status?
So, last week, actually, it was not last week, but the end of the prior week, I received notice from Colony that our bikes are at least three weeks away from being delivered. And so my response to Colony is to request that they consider reducing our annual payments, since we were given indication that we would be able to launch our program on July 1st. I'm saying, you know, July, August, September, October are the, I'm sorry, it was August 1st when they launched the program on the, on the Fox, so it's three months of a program. Remember, we also are getting the grant back from Kane County for $7,000 of our $12,700 investment, but I ask that they give some consideration to giving, only charging us a prorata share for that period of the time of the program that we actually have bikes in service, so I'm waiting to hear back from them about that.
Are we the only community that hasn't received it? Is it all the communities that have not received?
Of the four communities, we're the only community that doesn't have the bikes, to my knowledge.
And is it because we did with the electric?
It is possible that it's because the electric bikes, and that they did not have them located here in the USA, is my guess.
I'm waiting for one personally, so I know that struggle. Electric. Guess what I would say is, if they don't want to give us the money back, we want more bikes.
Okay.
Whatever the dollar, whatever you figure out as the prorata share, if they don't want to give us our money back, we need more bikes to make up for that.
Right.
Because we paid for the bikes for a certain period of time, we're not getting them, and we should be compensated one way or the other. Either reduce the cost to us, or give us more bikes.
Yep, thanks for bringing that up.
I heard that, Dan.
Okay.
Hey, Laura, this is Mark, I have one more thing.
Go ahead, Mark.
Where are we at with the rezoning of South River? We had talked about zoning it away from Light Industrial to something else, do you know?
You know, um...
You want me to jump in?
Yes, please. This is Scott Buni.
Yeah, Mark, that is, that is on our list of things to do, we have not really gotten very far with that unfortunately, due to other things that we've been doing, but that is on our list of things to do. You know, one of the things that we're looking at is whether or not we need to engage a consultant to do some of that study or not, or whether we can do that in-house, but that, that is something that we are still kicking around and trying to determine, you know, what, what process we're going to do to discuss and consider that.
Okay, I just know that with some of those properties for sale, that we don't want to be behind somebody trying to build a property that meets the current zoning that we're not necessarily comfortable with.
Good point.
Right, and, and the properties that are for sale are primarily zone PFI, so it is an unusual zoning district, so depending on what the reuse of those properties are, they may want to look to rezone that to a different district, and, you know, obviously, we have the control over that if that should happen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, now I need an, a motion to go into executive session for setting the price of land for sale.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, second by Knop, and we do not expect any action after the executive session, so BATV can stop the recording after we go into executive session. Okay, roll call.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan? Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley? Absent. Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risotto? Absent. Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanson?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
And Wolf?
Aye.
Motion carried, 11 to 0.
Okay, Laura, do you need to give the aldermen on the phone a different number to do the